Hello and welcome to UPTV's Council Candidate Video Voters Guide for 2013. I'm your host Heather Radel. Today, we're hearing from the candidates running for University Place City Council positions. This program will give you a chance to hear the candidates talk directly about the topics that are important to the city. Each candidate will make an opening and a closing statement, as well as answer three specific questions. The candidates were given the questions in advance so they could be better prepared to respond. Responses were limited to two minutes for each answer, and the candidates were not allowed to hear each other's answers. Let's get started. Please make your opening statement.
Hi, I'm Javier Figueroa. I hope that you're enjoying this taping of the candidates. Nothing like being on the hot seat. So what's new? I'm in my fourth year of my first term as council member. I ran for office in 2009 with a campaign slogan "Time for Change," and for transparency within our city government. I currently serve as the Council Finance Chair on the city's 2015 task force and as the Vice President of the Rainier Communications Commission. I've led the council debate on many important issues that needed to be debated before the public. As the council's finance chair, I've worked with senior staff to find the solution to refinance approximately $15 in bonds. I led the effort to install a flagpole to fly our old glory at our new civic building. In the past four years, our city has faced many challenges, from reducing expenditures to completing city projects to community programs. I have worked diligently and responsibly to meet our financial obligations for our financial sustainable future. And the year ahead, as a good steward of our community, I look forward to meeting our new challenges and expanding our goals and initiatives.
Hello, my name is Eric Chenier, and I'm running for reelection on the University Place City Council position number three. Four years ago, statements were made about our city situation. I heard UP is going bankrupt, Town Center is a failure, and we need to give it away at any cost. The budget is broken, and we need to do massive cuts to fix it. And we need to scuttle our laws to promote business growth. Rather than listen to the voices of fear, I helped lead the way for smart, responsible decisions on our budget. Now, our budget is stronger than ever before. We kept the vision of Town Center, but we refocused our efforts. Now, the library is reopened, we have our first business in Town Center, and over $30 million of private investment has happened, with much more to come. We did not have to remove our ordinances for business growth. Instead, we made some changes to help support new and future developments. For example, the new development that's going at Grandview Plaza, 40th and Bridgeport, and so forth. But I wanted to make sure that we are still protecting our residential neighborhoods when we're doing this. I have lived in University Place for over 20 years. I believe communities are strong when we're involved in it. I have never missed a council meeting, and I've always been involved in our city before and while I've been on council. I feel that when you're running for office, you need to understand the dynamics of a city and what makes a city great before you run. I want to still be your council member for the next four years, because University Place is getting stronger, and we need to keep moving forward.
Hi, my name is Steve Worthington. For more than 20 years, I've helped communities in the state grow, grow their economies, deal with problems. I've done that as an executive for local governments here. Now, I want to do that for the community that I live in, here in University Place. My wife and I, Jill, we bought our home here 14 years ago. We had our children go to Curtis High School, John and Ben. You may know them. You may know Jill. Jill, well, Mrs. Worthington. She taught at University Place Primary for, well, until she retired last year. Those are some of the things you might know about me and my family. One of the things you don't perhaps know is that we were in Spokane. I actually went over to Spokane to get married to Jill back in 1976. When I was there, I worked as an economic development specialist for small cities. I managed businesses, and I owned a couple of restaurants, The Crapery and Henry's Pub in downtown Spokane. It was an interesting experience being a business owner. There were things that I learned there that I certainly keep in mind every day. I'll tell you what one of them was. One of them is the unintended consequences that come about from government action. In Spokane, there was a city council that changed its parking laws once, essentially overnight, and that really threatened my business. In fact, it almost shut it down. I had to fight to be heard, and I had to fight to get it cured, but I did. I always remember that, because it helps me keep in mind that even with the best intentions, bad things can happen. And so, as a city manager, as a community development director, and I hope as well as a city council member for you, I'll keep in mind the unintended consequences. I remember what it's like. Thank you. I hope you'll consider voting for me. I'd like to tell you more about some of the important issues in front of me today, in front of us.
Well, first, it's important to say thank you for allowing me to serve on the city council. I hope you would agree that we've seen many great changes over the years, especially in the past four years. Our crime rates remained very low, because we have a very dedicated police team. We have significantly reduced our debt, and we've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest by refinancing at historically low rates. We've maintained city services, we've kept parks and trails and open spaces alive and well, including city events, because you've told us that those are things that are very important to you. Our city staffing is one of the lowest of any city in the entire state of Washington. We keep it very lean, because you've told us that's important to you also. And our finance department has, again, this past year, as it has many, many years, been awarded national honors. So, we're very proud of what's going on in University Place, and I'm very glad to live and serve in this community. After 18-plus years, I can tell you that I wouldn't trade this experience of being on the city council for anything. It has been truly amazing.
Yes, my name is Carl Muller. I'm running for position number four, University Place City Council, obviously. And I'd like to say that I ran for city council the first time back in 1994, '95, actually '94. It was part of the making of University Place. The reason we wanted to get University Place to be a city is that we wanted more core services, and we thought we weren't getting enough from the county. So we started University Place. And in the process of doing this, at the beginning, I ran for city council and said, "Hey, look it, if we can't just get out our credit card and start spending," which is what we, some of the people wanted to do. And I said, "Well, we shouldn't be doing this, because 10, 20 years down the road, we're going to be $50, $100 million in debt." Well, basically, that's where we are right now, for $50 million in debt plus interest. Not a good idea for a small city of 32,000 people. So, my idea is to, first of all, we have to do is we have to stop spending money. We get grants. Grants are money that they actually take from us, take it and launder it a little bit, give it to somebody else, they give it to a group, then you have to beg for it in a grant, and usually in a grant, you have to do 50% of your own money. If we keep, keep doing these little things we've been doing around the city and big things, and we have to keep paying 50%, the debt is going to go even higher than the $50 million we already have. And we can't spend any more money than we have now, because we're at the debt limit right now. In 24 years, when the money that we have right now and have to pay back is paid for, we're going to have been spending $40 million on the money that we borrowed. Not a good idea, and it's going to get bigger. 24 years, we don't even know what's going to happen in 24 minutes, much less 24 years. So saying that we got a balanced budget, we don't have a balanced budget. Anybody that thinks we have a balanced budget is unbalanced. Thank you, Carl Muller.
As you know, I have been your city council member for the last four years, the past two years as your mayor pro tem. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve you. As I reflect back on time when I was a brand-new city council member, there was a lot of controversy and disappointment in our community because of the Town Center's large debt and lack of progress. The project was a high-risk economic development venture. It hit a brick wall with the downturn in the economy. Most of you were upset and started to lose hope, as well as trust in not only the city's vision, but our founding fathers of this community, the initial city council. Some of these days, along with the uptick in our economy and some loosening of the few initial standards to include some of the Town Center's regulations, this project is back on track. It is a viable and active project. It is my hope that by this time next year, you will see the heart of our community sprout the hope, the passion, and the innovation that a young University Place has been known for. Both you and I are truly blessed to live in a city that not only is cognizant of its natural beauty, but also not afraid to take risks in order to make innovative changes to our infrastructure that will improve the standard of living of its citizens. In the next couple of years, I hope to work hard to ensure that your accustomed lifestyle in University Place is protected. What my focus will be is to sustain police services and have them become more fully funded, as well as looking for practical ways to maintain and enhance our streets. That will define not only walkability, but also include a viable transit system. This will ultimately lead to a discussion of a city visiting process. That decision will ultimately be yours. Thank you again for allowing me to serve you as your city council.
What do you view as the most important issues currently facing the city?
As we look ahead, challenges remain. We continue to rely on our community to support recreational programs, though it's unsustainable, responsible, and even realistic. Additionally, we must identify resources for the maintenance of our roads. Where is the money to come from? Other financial concerns: the cost to encourage economic growth and develop a more stable tax base; the concern that the state may seek to resolve its dismal financial condition by withdrawing revenues historically distributed to cities; and finally, we may again face new statewide initiatives that have a negative effect on city financial resources or responsibilities.
Like any city, University Place will always have issues that we need to address. Ours are going to be similar and different than other cities. We will need to address with our citizens our police, our parks, and our road services. These are real issues all cities have, but other cities have handled them differently. For police, as we continue to grow, UP will need to add more officers. I supported adding two more officers to our police force since I started, but this was only done responsibly without eliminating other services. We will need to do more. For parks, as new construction continues, impact fees from the new construction will help develop current properties, like the undeveloped properties at 67th Street, Circa Alameda, the Chambers Creek Trail, and so on. However, we will need to have the revenue to maintain and upgrade all of our parks over time. For roads, many people are going to tell you that University Place roads are great. Our Public Works Director Gary Cooper gave me the best analogy. Maintaining roads are like maintaining your car. If you stay on top of it, it doesn't cost very much. If you don't, it costs you a lot more. Unfortunately, if you look to our neighbors in Tacoma, this is what can happen when you don't stay on top of it. These will be the discussions that we will have with council and the community. In the end, we will present the options to our residents, but this will only be done with smart choices and not one-time quick fixes that will cripple our budget.
You know, in the last few years, six positions have been cut from the police force in the patrol division. That really has changed the safety of our community. It's also put the officers that service in jeopardy. We really need to find a way to put more patrol officers on the street. Also, did you know that in the next two years, the cost of police service contract that's already approved, already in the budget, already done, is going to increase to the point where it turns the city's revenues from being in the black to being in the red? We basically can't afford the level of service at the projected revenues that the city has. We need to do something about our economy in order to make that work. We need to grow this economy. We need to be able to address that in a real way. What in my view we need to do is we need to spread our economic base. We need more variety of different types of businesses here. We have focused on retail, which is good, but the retail pie is just only so big. And investors know that. They look at what the shopping area is. We need to look at other ways to grow the economy, from services to bringing in businesses that can grow and expand here to a reasonable level, that fit in this community's complexion and personality. Another issue we have is emergency preparedness. We don't have the money to take care of an emergency in the budget. Our reserves are gone, the credit card is maxed. We need to find ways to put money in the bank, we need to find ways to return credit to this community, so when the unforeseeable happens, and we know it will, we can be prepared.
Well, first and foremost, as it has been since incorporation and continues to be today, public safety is and will remain number one. It's been a little more challenging these past years in a down economy, but the council has worked very diligently to be creative, to find ways to not only maintain, but to expand services without increased taxation. With 3% increases yearly in our county contract and a 1% lid on property tax, you can understand how it has been more challenging. But we're not going to give up. We are going to continue to look for creative ways to add to the police services. And I think it's important that everyone understands that every dollar that we collect in property tax goes to public safety, every single cent. And so, we're trying to do the very best with the dollars that come in. The completion of the Town Center is also, first and foremost, on many minds in the city, and we're excited that there will be an anticipated announcement very soon for the anchor tenant, which will be a huge, huge finish to what has already been started on the Town Center property. But what's more important is that with that, the public investment and the private investment will match each other. In fact, the private investment will be over what has been invested in tax dollars to date. That's been the plan from the start, and that plan is working.
The most important issue facing University Place right now is debt. We're at our debt limit, we seem to be spending more and more money, and we just can't keep on doing this. We have other cities around us, Lakewood, they don't have a big debt, and they've got twice the number of people that we have. As a matter of fact, the city council over there gets half, or less than half the money that the people here are making, the council, and we're not doing a very good job, and we haven't done a very good job from the beginning. We have a Town Center over here that is not going to get completed, because we don't have any money for it, and the initial plan of having all these businesses in a small area, very small footprint, is just an old-fashioned idea. So 1930s and 1940s, that stopped. Nowadays, people have to come in, do their shopping, and leave real quick, because they're doing a lot more things. They have to do a lot more things quickly, and putting everything in a small area, including the police department and the fire department, and then we have an emergency, and so the people are shopping, the emergency occurs, the fire trucks go out, run over the people. I mean, that's just really stupid. And to do it the way they did it, they still, right now, they have the fire department where it should be, about a half a mile from here, and the police being in the same area, it's just not a real smart idea. Also, what we've done is we've closed down the streets. We've turned four-lane roads into two-lanes, and we've, the people who come through this area have slowed down, and they call it traffic calming. You don't calm the traffic by slowing it down, you really make people mad, and it's not a good idea. We have to change the plan, and that's it. We've got to quit spending the money, and we've got to get smart here, actually think about it. And keeping the same pathway is just not a good idea, and we should stop. Carl Muller, thank you.
It is maintaining our current level of services beyond the year 2018. Our citizens have grown accustomed, and rightfully so, to extraordinary customer service in regards to public safety, public works, events, and recreational programs. The city council must reflect and have a conversation with the citizens on how to maintain not only this level of service, but a way to further leverage our resources to not only maintain our current level services, but to ensure that our city's infrastructure is maintained at a quality level of service. We understand that some public entities are raising their fees and taxes as their solution to the same budgetary shortfalls. For this maintenance and sustainability issue, your council is interested in looking at all options. That is why your city staff and your city council will be working hard to figure out a way to manage the upcoming budgetary constraints without raising taxes. I do not have a crystal ball, but the bubble that popped in 2008, and Washington State taking away additional city funds from our budget this year, has really placed an undue hardship on all local municipalities. In order to fix this, please talk to your state senator and legislators to seek a better way to make accommodations to their budgets, so that they can restore the funds that they have taken away from your city, so that we can provide and continue to provide the amenities that enriches your lifestyle today.
The city recently celebrated its 18th birthday. The council is beginning the process of updating the city's vision and long-range goals. What is your vision for the city for the next 10 years?
Simply, it is economic growth. We must focus on business retention, expansion, and recruitment. We must look assertively and continuously at policies and regulations that may refresh the city, the city's ability to energize commerce and bring in revenue to enhance our finances and community services.
I feel that we're in a time that when we look back in 20 years, this will be one of the best times of growth our city will ever experience. In 10 years, by continuing to make responsible budget decisions, several of our bonds will be paid off. We will have a vibrant variety of park options in University Place, including a completed Chambers Bay Properties with a brand-new dog park. Our designated regional growth center will revitalize Bridgeport Way, 27th Street, and Narrows Plaza by centralizing new development growth, but still protecting our residential neighborhoods. Town Center will long be done, and there will be the walkable downtown area that University Place has always envisioned. Our school district will still be one of the best in the United States. With a successful 2015 U.S. Open, I believe University Place will be called again to host other golf events, including another U.S. Open in the next decade. I have these visions because of the smart decisions we've made now, and we continue to make in the future, and that'll make us the envy of the entire region. We will be in this position because we've decided to keep moving forward and not start over and undo the past successes we have achieved in the last four years.
You know, I can see a time in 2024, when this community is busy with a commercial core that people are walking in, that serves many of our retail needs. It also offers jobs for us as well. I can also see us using a trail system that's already began, but needs to be more filled out, completed, that connects important places that people use for recreation and they use to get to and from, home and shops and work. They do it with bikes and on foot. I can also see a time where we continue a course with our quality neighborhoods, those neighborhoods have even stronger identities, and there's an opportunity in this community to take businesses that start on the kitchen table, that move into the garage, that then want to blossom out into a shop or a small business center, and that opportunity is here and made real, and you can be successful in University Place from the start of an idea to a full-fledged business. That's the sort of future I see. Additionally, I think one of the things that makes us special, one of the things that perhaps is on that unique side for our community, is how we interact with our waterfront and how we can improve that. University Place has an opportunity to look carefully at how it develops its marinas, at how they can be inviting places for the public, so that people would come to the coastline, the water, the marinas, and experience them in a different way, with shops, with restaurants, with activities of interest, and really connect with Puchett Sound. I think that's the type of thing that we have an opportunity for, and together, working, polishing, identifying what's important to us, we can achieve those goals with your council, with my efforts, and with yours.
Well, first, I would like to say that the city's vision and the long-range goal, it's not a decision for seven members of the city council, it's not a decision for city staff. It's a decision that 32,000 voices need to be heard. We need your input. This is your city, it's your future, and how you want that molded in shape needs to be up to you. How we move forward needs to be your decision. We will put together a process that'll be very user-friendly, so that we can hear from as many voices as possible, because it's a partnership, we can't do it without your help. Some of the things that we've talked about, and you've let us know how important they are to you, is that you want to maintain our beautiful neighborhoods. We've worked hard, we will continue to, to make sure that that happens. We need to grow our local economy, so that we can increase services, and we need to build our economic base with new retail, so that we can sustain those increases. We want to make sure that retail dollars that are still leaking out of the city are recaptured here. It's very important, and we see that in the future happening very quickly. And we hope to expand our parks and our trails and our open spaces, because you've told us over and over that that's a priority and it's very important. And we want to make sure that those uses are for all ages, from our very young to our seniors can benefit from those amenities in the city.
The vision for the city is that we have to get better in our planning and our thinking and our spending. We, right now, are on a downturn, and we're going down basically money-wise, down the toilet, but we seem to keep spending money. We have to stop, think of what we're doing, and do it smarter and better, and not spend any money on it. I've lived in University Place for 43 years. The first 20 years that I've lived here, we didn't spend a lot of money doing all these things that we really did need to do. We don't need these really pretty streets and all that, spend the money on something that we really don't need, and then have to pay two, three times for it. What I mean is this, we have $50 million of debt. 24 years is the plan now that we get it paid for. At the end of that 24-year period, a lot of us, me, I'll probably be, I'll be 101 years old. I don't think I'll be sitting here talking like this, that we have spent 40-some million dollars on something that we didn't need in the first place, our kids, the people who live here, you are going to have to pay for this. And everything, all the money that the city is going to get from you to pay these bills is based on your house and what they can get from you. And if you don't start stopping and stop spending the money, they're going to take more from you, and they've already taken a lot now, and it's higher than other cities. We're going to have to, it's just not a really good program. It's, to me, it's really stupid. If you borrow money and you don't pay that money back at the end of the month, then you're incurring a lot of interest. And if you keep letting it go on and on and on, like we are for 24 years, this is dumb. $40 million is going to go right down the toilet, which means we're not going to get to use it for things we really need. If we're going to plan this thing, let's pay as we go, not borrow it, make it look nice, get this uppity yuppy thing going, and then have to pay an extra $40 million. Thank you, Carl Muller.
I look to our citizens to lead the journey on what city they would like to continue to become. This will include our parks, open spaces, streets, public safety, organic comprehensive plans, and economic development. Currently, your Parks Commissioners are working on the public processes for our master site plan in some of the new parks that do not have these master site plans in place. This is a big start. Our commissions and you must come together once the city council sets a direction with a subject matter expert, in focusing each and every citizen's dream on what our city can become. Then, place this vision into a packaged product for public comment, and then a final vote by your city council. There'll be many public processes in place to establish the city vision. Ultimately, the 20-year vision is actually your dreams that you would like to see our city evolve and become. I believe this is a strategic turning point in our city's 18-year history, and will continue our legacy of our citizens' expectations of quality services and lifestyle that is warm and welcoming, complemented by the city of University Place's natural beauty, which is fueled by economic development.
University Place will be the host city for the 2015 U.S. Open. What do you think will be the benefits and challenges with hosting the event?
Benefits: We expect to receive approximately $2 million in sales and excise taxes. University Place will be a GPS location globally. The event will be the cost for millions of dollars to be spent on advertising and marketing for the event. And UP will significantly benefit from this effort. A significant economic boost to our local merchants, and community pride, rare and unique to be a host city to a world event. Challenges: Funding the cost of being a host city. How do we, as a community, host city, dress up for the occasion? Welcoming signage, banners... Welcoming signage, banners, welcome packages, et cetera. Traffic noise, traffic flow, emergency preparedness in case of a natural disaster, and many more.
The 2015 U.S. Open will put University Place on the center stage for the world to see. We will benefit in the long term by showcasing our beautiful city, the amazing diversity, and our progressive ways that we have used to succeed over very difficult times. We, as a community, are going to need to put our best foot forward and come together. That means being a graceful and appreciative host city. We need to make sure we look our best all over the city. It also means we are one positive voice for the world to hear. We need to make sure that we see other U.S. Opens and mistakes that have happened and know that we shall not repeat those mistakes because we are very fortunate to have a very special event here in University Place. The long-term benefits of a successful U.S. Open should be incentive enough not to repeat past mistakes of others. I am just not talking about golfers coming to play Chambers Bay, but conventions coming to Pierce County that may come because we know how to be great hosts as an area. New business growth that comes because, as an area, we have proven that we can all come together to get things done. Starting October, we, as a council, will be preparing for what we will need to do to prepare for the U.S. Open, and we will show the world in 2015, University Place is ready to go.
Well, I, I think we'll see weeks of tough travel and a real interruption in our, in our routines. I think that's going to be difficult for us. I think the city is also going to try very hard to deal with all those issues, and we'll also try to recoup the costs that, as best it can. And for a moment, we're going to see an injection of some sales tax and admission tax that'll help us deal with some of those specific costs. But really, really, the opportunity that I see with the U.S. Open here is that it's an opportunity for us to explain to the world what makes University Place special. What is it about this community that we love, that endears it to us, that keeps us here? And I think that's the opportunity that I see. Now, in order to do that, we need to be able to identify what's important. We need to be able to state our messages effectively. We may, we need be able to host the press in a very realistic way that can help convey the things that are important. That's going to take some preparation. That's going to take some time, and we can move forward with those important issues. And we can present to the world a University Place that we've loved, that we cherish, and that we're invested in. And I think that's maybe the most specific opportunity that we have. Thank you.
I believe the benefit is going to be that millions of eyes will be on City University Place. It's an exposure that you couldn't possibly ever afford to have, and so it's going to be huge, not only for University Place, but for this region. And of course, with that comes the expectation of how, how it's going to be handled. And I think for me, one of the biggest sighs of relief is when our police chief came back, who was able to attend the championship this past year in Marion, and said with a sigh of relief, "We can do this." The space there was much smaller than what we have. In fact, they had bleachers, they had to rent people's backyards to put bleachers in, and that's not what we're looking at here. So when he came back and, and with assurance, said, "We can do this, it's going to be successful," just by his participation and being able to see it, was a huge relief. We're going to deal with traffic issues because I know there's a lot of concern in the community about that. How am I going to get to my home? And we will have all of that strategically in place far before the U.S. Open happens. But this is an opportunity, yes, it'll generate dollars for the city, it's going to generate dollars for the state, that we will get a percentage back. And so economically, it's a good thing. But more importantly is that when this team of people leave, when the executives pack up and leave University Place, we want to ensure that the thought that they have is that they felt welcome, that it was hosted well, we were accommodating, and that this is a location that they would like to keep in their rotation for future U.S. Opens. It's, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and we're looking forward to doing it right.
Yes, the U.S. Open, the benefits. Benefits are obviously that people will come to the City of University Place and see what we have here. It's a nice area, we're good people, nice little town, and to get a chance to see it is great, maybe they want to come back. But right now, in the last three or four years, we've lost businesses, which we shouldn't have done. In fact, the city itself put 35 businesses out of business when they bought the land and put the town center and all that thing, which is not really going to get finished because, the way it was planned, because it was just too dreamy in the first place without paying 100, pardon me, a third of a billion dollars, the bill, really dumb. So we get the people here to see the City of University Place, maybe want to come back, but it, it's a great thing, but it saddens me that we didn't do something smarter to start with than we already have. But we can still show a good face, try to get a few more businesses going. We basically put out the, the Italian restaurant that was here. But we can't get, start spending a lot of money like Eric Chenere wanted to do, $15 million to spruce up the area between I-5 and University Place. Spend no money, clean it up, get some volunteers from the people, make it happy, but don't just paint everything and put money in it that we're never going to get back. Somebody put in the paper, this is going to be a windfall. If the 230,000 people they say they're going to be here each eat 12 hot dogs a day at a dollar apiece for the full seven days, we can earn a million dollars. But I don't think 230,000 people each day are going to eat 42 hot dogs to do this. So this windfall is basically, I feel, a joke. If we make any money at all, we'd be lucky. Thank you, Carl Molno.
This is one of the most exciting events on the West Coast, and it's happening in your city, the City of University Place. The USGA will most certainly handle the bulk of the strategic planning, and UP will certainly enhance this experience for a week-long extravaganza with plans to extend the event experience so that everyone can get to enjoy it. At the council retreat on October 12th, we will lay the groundwork to establish a synergy with the U.S. Open by promoting our businesses through marketing and city site events. For example, we are thinking about building a pavilion in Market Square that could televise the tournament while citizens can enjoy great local food and entertainment. Place banners throughout the community to include local activities that lead up to this magnificent event week. Secretly, I'm hoping to break a sign code or two so that we can have banners strung across Bridgeport, announcing our festivities during that week. We can also establish a website that will focus on these types of activities and events leading up to the real deal of the U.S. Open to include real-time game day play-by-play. The actual challenge will be to relax and have fun with this organized frenzy and just enjoy our moment in the spotlight.
Please make your closing statements.
As citizens of University Place, we must all engage and participate in keeping our community financially healthy. We can be change agents, flexible, creative, and bold, yet physically conservative, conservative in the changes we make. We are a proud community with many of the amenities invited by many of our surrounding communities. The value of the dollar fluctuates, and we will always be pressed to be more financially savvy. But our vision for University Place should always be in the forefront of our actions that drive us to act as a community. Thank you for listening, and always feel free to contact me with any questions or concerns. Just go to the city's website for my contact information. I hope I have earned your respect as a council member, and I ask for your vote on November 5th. Ciao.
For the past few minutes, I've discussed our issues, my vision for University Place, and the 2015 U.S. Open. I have been open about these discussions because I always find a positive solution on any issue. When I was elected four years ago, my campaign theme was new ideas and better solutions. I feel this has been accomplished. Whether it is supporting opening up drive-through options south of Town Center, adjusting and lowering traffic impact fees to give credits for businesses that generate sales tax revenue, recalibrating our direction for Town Center while still protecting the vision, going after grants throughout the city to add more sidewalks, streetlights, road improvements around the area, working together with other cities like Furcrest at Tacoma for multi-jurisdictional street projects on Mildred next to Narrows Plaza or the 56 Cirque Corridor. I worked in these items and many others with some simple philosophies. I will support new business growth in UP, but I will still protect our residential neighborhoods. I will be open to change to help foster new development, but I will not pass those costs onto our residents. I will continue to be out there and discuss issues with you or questions citizens may have about University Place. One of the things, growing up, is my mother gave me a simple philosophy. If you can't stand up for what you believe in, then you stand for nothing, and I want to stand with you. My name is Eric Chenere, and I ask for your vote in this fall for reelection to University Place City Council, position three, because I want to be there to help keep our city moving forward. Thank you very much.
I'm running for seat number three with the University Place City Council. I want, I want to have your vote. I need to have your vote, and I'm asking you to vote for me. I bring with me 20 years of insight and experience, working closely with cities across the state, large and small, dealing with a variety of problems and helping them solve them. I've participated in over, or nearly rather, 1,000 council meetings. My opponent has not. I have a master's degree in how government operates. My opponent does not. I've owned and operated a small business, making payroll and a profit. My opponent hasn't. And I've successfully brought new investment into the communities I have served. My opponent has not. These are some of the examples of how I differ from the incumbent. I want to thank you for watching Steve Worthington for Council, this video pamphlet, if that's what they'd like to call it, or guide. I encourage you to watch my opponent's video as well. Visit his website, visit my website, compare us, because when you compare us, I think you'll agree that Steve Worthington is worth your vote. Let's make UP better.
What an exciting time to live in University Place. So many new projects. The Clearview apartment homes are now leasing well in Town Center. The recently completed addition to the Green Fur Shopping Center with a drive-through Starbucks. Applebee's, the foundation has been poured, and that'll be open soon. And starting in November, we will see the completion of our final parking garage and yet another beautiful building with the Latitude 47 that will add over 160 more living units and 22,000 square feet of new retail. Ground will break soon on Phase 1 of a beautiful new senior living facility at 27th and Grand View that will transform that historic, historic corner of our city. And I hope that, as I am, you are enjoying the improvements on 27th Street as it comes back to new life with streetscape and street lighting and soon-to-be repaved bike lanes, all bringing back that historic part of the city to the grandeur that it deserves. We're just 20 months away from being in the world's spotlight as millions of eyes will be focused on University Place as we host the 2015 U.S. Open Golf Tournament. Even with all of these happenings, the best is yet to come. Exciting news for our Town Center project will be announced very soon. Your trust in the city council, your advice to hold on to the dream of creating a sense of place will become a reality very soon. It would be my sincere pleasure to continue to serve you on the city council, and I would very much appreciate your vote to keep this community moving, make, and continue to have it a place that we can all be proud of, and that can happen with your vote on November 5th.
Well, I, as Carl Molno, running for city council, this is the fourth time I've run. The first time was, of course, when we first recruited the city, and then 2009, 2011, and now 2013. The reason I'm doing this is to obviously try to get forth to you, the people who are voting, what the city, I think, should be doing relative to get out of the morass of big debt that we have. And that is for you to think about, do you want the person whose position I'm trying to vie for, who is the mayor, Ken Grassi, nice fella, but he was here for this whole period of time and basically voted for the wrong things, put, spent too much money, tried to spend money they didn't have, did spend money they didn't have, and now we're in big debt. This is not real smart. You, the people, can change. We have a really good person who is running the city right now, as far as the director is Steve Sugg, and we have a great lawyer, Steve Victor. But those people and the team of the city people working, they're all good people working for the city, only go in the direction that the city council tells them to go. The city council leads the people. And so if you change that so that the city council is different and get some people who have, who really have brains and can actually use them in the process and be common sense about it, not spend money that they don't have, you can change the city, it can go better, we'll spend less money, we'll be on common sense again, and we'll pay down the debt. That's the biggest thing, pay down the debt. 24 years of three and a half, $4 million every year with about $150,000 to $200,000 a month in interest that we'll never see again, that we're paying somebody, it's just plain stupid. You can change it, you can do it. Vote for Carl Molno. Thank you very much.
Reflecting back on my last four years as your city council member, this experience has not only been a wonderful experience for me, but I have gotten to know how truly dedicated you are to your city's vision and the quality of our staff that supports this vision as well. Therefore, I have not only grown personally, but professionally from being your city council member. A growth that is more in faith, patience, and tolerance in regards to sometimes a very slow will of government decision-making. However, I do believe this is the best process to make the, the best decisions for our city. As I look over my goals as a candidate, I have checked off most of these and added a lot more to these goals that are driven by your grassroots citizen groups and committees. These are truly your goals that I have implemented through the council decision-making process in order to further your decision for our city. We have now a history museum, renewing our historical 27th Street, additional police officers, a city flag, a new city performance audit, renewed business synergy, adjustments in our code to encourage business growth, along with establishing strong ties with our military community connector unit, the 16th Cab. I have only mentioned a few accomplishments. Our future has a lot more to offer, such as more economic development milestones for Grand View Plaza and Town Center that you will see come to fruition in the next few years. The pulse of our community is alive with the vision and the passion that will include everyone's ideals. Please communicate your community vision to me so that I can continue to bring forward to the public process your ideas. And again, thank you wholeheartedly for another four years as your representative on your city council.
This concludes our Council Candidate Video Voters Guide. We hope this program has provided you with some insight into the views of the candidates. Be sure to get out there and vote at the general election on Tuesday, November 5th. I'm Heather Radell. Thank you for watching the Council Candidate Video Voters Guide on UP TV.